I can't see anything.
It is red.
I got a thumbs up, I'm going for it.
I'm kind of colorblind, so I can't really see. I really can't see any red here. It's just a gray box, as far as I'm concerned.
Good evening, I'm Shanna Cox, Chair of the Lewiston Planning Board. I welcome all here this evening and call this meeting to order officially. May I please have the roll call? Yes. Roger Dupree?
Yep.
Michael Markot?
Present.
Lucy Bisson, President. Mark Roy?
Here.
Shanna Cox?
Here.
Amy Smith?
Here.
Penthea Burns?
Here.
And Zoe Leenstrom?
Here.
And for staff, there is Jonathan Connor, the Director of Planning, and Shelley Norton.
Deputy Director.
I'm sorry?
Deputy Director.
Deputy Director, thank you. I didn't have my chitch. Thank you. Shelley, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
How about correspondence this evening?
So there's been a couple of emails in the last week and a half with responses from different directors of the department answering questions you had posed at the last meeting on the capital improvement plan. We did prepare a memo that put all of those in one place for you that we've handed out tonight. I believe the school district is the only one you haven't heard from so far.
Okay, thank you. There are no public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to other business. Before we begin with that, Alex is my voting member and is absent, should we recognize? Do you have a record of who our most recent associate was to vote?
I don't. I believe Zoe has just been appointed, so she wouldn't have voted yet, and I don't know when Penthea would have been.
Okay, great. Zoe, given that we have a voting board member absence this evening, we would designate you as a voting member for the duration of this evening or until Mr. Pine arrives.
Yep, that works for me.
Thank you. Okay, so this evening, we have a continued review of the Lewiston Capital Improvement Plan. The full improvement plan can be accessed online, which is available in our public agenda, and I believe we have some guests this evening. I'd like to welcome our interim acting deputy city administrator, Mr. O'Malley, and our head of Public Works, and I know there's some others that you might call on, I'll let you name them as you feel fit, but welcome.
Thank you. So you folks had submitted a bunch of questions to Shelley and the staff, so we've attempted to answer those for you. I also put on your desk, I think Member Markot perhaps asked for the LCIP history in terms of the 80% limit, so I did provide you with that documentation I got from Tracy Rura, Finance Director, back in 2011, that was when that 80% limitation was approved by the City Council. And if you look at this, it goes back from 2011, you look over the years, this past year we did meet the 80%, but then the three years prior we didn't, and then we did again in 2021, so you can look at that. The question was, was that, was asked, was that going to be addressed by the City Council? In order to go above that 80%, they need a supermajority, which is five votes, but that has not been changed at this point, in terms of the 80%.
Any follow-up questions on that issue?
Yeah, I was taking a quick look at that when you pointed it out before the meeting, and one question I have, looking at some of these numbers, is the progression, and I kick myself because I actually have a file that I've been personally maintaining that shows the progression of debt for the city and even a per capita aspect. So when we look at such out-years as what's referenced is 2013 at 16 million, which is 11 million over the cap, and then the 23 million in 2020, which is 16 million over the cap, that really, even if the next few years within, and within by a small amount, that really takes a big pinch out of the next X amount of years, which could be quite a few X amount of years. That's my concern, and I don't know if there's a chart somewhere, it may be in the annual report, it's not in the LCIP, but the annual report might actually have that progression of the city's debt as it is fully reflected each year, and it can also be percentized by the population of the city.
Yeah, I believe in the presentation that Director Roy presented back, I think it was January 7th, I think, in that slide, so I could get her PowerPoint and forward that to all of you, I think she did have the breakdown of the debt and what the city is facing. If you do have concerns about that, we're looking for the recommendation by February 15th to go to the City Council, so if you want to address that and your recommendation, I think that would be a good time to send that to the City Council.
Both of the years that Mr. Markot spoke to have asterisks next to him, is there anything that happened in those years that you want to name for us?
I could say COVID in 2020, but I don't know if that was the particular reason back at 2020. I'm not familiar with why it was so high, I was the police chief at the time. I could research that for you, but this is what I was able to find in terms of when we didn't, when we went over the 80%.
I'm wondering if either related to schools.
Could be the redundant water line, perhaps, Kevin, maybe you could jump in if you know, back in 2020.
It says here, LHS Classroom Wing Addition and Cultural Center.
See, where did you get that version?
The last, the last sheet of the memo that's on the table has the breakdown that Mr. O'Malley was speaking about, and then also at the bottom it explains the star and the double star.
Yeah.
Here, you want?
No, I'm.
You're all set? Okay.
I'm glad they were able to get that information from you.
Thank you. Well, it felt like the asterisks indicated you wanted to convey something else, it was just on two separate pieces. Yeah, it was LMS in one year and LHS in the other.
Okay.
Thank you, Lucy. Welcome, Mr. Pine.
Hello.
Sorry to rob you of your voting opportunities, Zoe.
This is a steep learning curve, only my second meeting in the middle of this stuff, so.
You're doing great. From a process point, is there a presentation that either of you have, or are you hoping to just respond to questions?
Questions, and I, Bill Grant from the School Department is here, right over there. I was not able to get a written response, so if you have questions about the School Department, I'd be more than happy to have him come up here and try to answer some of your questions. So we tried to get, because I can't get everybody here, so that's why I tried to have all the different departments and agencies answer your questions. I mean, I think it would be smart to review those, if you have questions about their responses, we can try again to get further information, but like I said, we're looking for February 15th to get your final recommendation for the City Council.
I think we're feeling good about that timeline.
Good.
Actually. Great, so before we launch into questions, I'd first like to look at the board and see if we can use the same process that we did last time, which is by, where instead of reviewing line by line and going in a row by row or alphabetical order, we really took it by areas that we had questions for, and we started with some of the largest budget areas first. That coupled with, do any of the department heads need to leave early this evening? A finance committee meeting or a school committee meeting, for example, that we should be aware of, because we can certainly place that department first? Is that accurate for school? Okay. Okay. Are folks okay with starting with the school budget and then going to other department questions? Mr. Grant, do you want to do it from the podium or join these gentlemen up front? All right, they're lovely and friendly, they'll welcome you. All right, so then.
He's coming. All right. Let's give him a go.
If you are looking, I think page 10 is a good reference point for us to start with, you'll find the School Department starts on page 88 of the book. Shelley, forgive me if I don't know all of the questions that were submitted, but were there any questions submitted since we met last specific to the School Department, and could you aid us in bringing them forward? There was not?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you. Members of the board, do you have any questions for the School Department? I'll bring forward a thank you, we noticed that you're planning further into the future, that was noted and appreciated when we reviewed it last. I'll give everyone a minute to look through these pages. Yes, Ms. Bisson?
Well, I just have a general question for the School Department. I know you've got 285 Main Street.
287, yep.
87, well.
Close enough.
Close enough. Okay, so there was some general stuff in here, so I was wondering if you could elaborate a little bit on what's planned for that, what, you know?
Yep, so the planning process for that still continues, the opportunity came to buy that last spring and ultimately ended up closing later in the spring. But 287 Main really was kind of speaking to the need of additional space for students and increase in enrollment, but also looking at some things coming down the road. Child Development Services, if you're familiar with CDS through the state, is looking at having public schools take that programming over, so that is going to be looking at ages zero to four and services for those students. So 287 Main was really kind of an opportunity for us to purchase space and start to project on how we might use it going forward. Also looking at our Dingly Building, which is pretty much completely full, and what we could do to have additional space.
Okay, thank you.
But I do just want to be clear that we are still in the planning, the overall planning for what that building will be, so.
Thank you. So one discussion point the board had at our last meeting as we reviewed is if, perhaps you could tell us a little bit more about any type of overall facilities capital needs assessment or kind of holistic planning to all of the facilities in our School Department, and how that might both inform regular capital improvement and this one specifically?
Yeah, so, and I got that question, but just to kind of explain that to you, so our different facilities, nine school buildings, in the past summer we began a facilities assessment, I should say back up to 2019, we had a facilities assessment done on the Longley Building and what that would need to be for upgrades and things like that. And then in previous LCIP, we did have an ask for facilities assessments for our other buildings, so we've begun that this past summer. The two buildings that we began it with is Montello and Lewiston Middle School, it ended up being a good thing because it was a, two opportunities it presented us, one, to get all of that information to help for our capital improvement planning, but two, every four years, the State of Maine opens up the school construction program, and so this allowed us to submit those two schools for potentially being put on the list, well, they'll be on a list, but high enough on the list to be able to get potentially new schools. And then in that, now that we own 287 Main, in the purchasing of that, we also did have a facilities assessment done on that as well. So currently we're engaged with Harriman Associates to do facilities assessments on our remaining buildings. During COVID, there was a lot of internal work that was done on facilities assessment things because there was a great opportunity to get funding with COVID dollars to do different renovations to buildings, particularly around air quality and HVAC systems, so we had some of that. So as we sit down as a staff and the School Committee has a subcommittee on facilities, we looked at our 2026 LCIP request for the schools, kind of having two main drivers. One, the strategic plan of our school, and that's really centered around ensuring that our students have the resources that are safe and that it's going to do some learning environment. The other thing is kind of directed by having a long-term facilities plan that the state requires us to maintain, and we have 10 priority areas that we look at in there. So those 10 areas would be heating and ventilation, HVAC, plumbing and electrical systems, roof systems, building exterior, windows and doors, interior, any upgrades and renovations that might have to happen there, exterior sites, that would include everything from our parking lots to sites that we share, like our sports fields with the city, building technology that would be really based around our camera systems and access controls, door access controls, intrusion systems, our life safety, fire alarm, fire suppression systems, and then finally, school safety planning. So those are the 10 priority areas that we look at for what we need to be looking for capital improvements. And so as we go into this year, our focus areas for those was increasing space for increased student enrollment population that we have, and programming, talking about the CDS, but also we're doing a lot of work around our special ed programming and bringing some things back in-house rather than tuitioning students out to special purpose programmings. Building envelope is a really big thing, specifically focusing on roofs, doors, and windows. Building exteriors and site maintenance, that came from our recent facilities assessments with Montello and LMS, we had some ADA compliance, particularly outside the buildings, that we needed to look at, sidewalks, paving, things like that. In our planning with the city, we looked at Franklin pasture, not only the fields, but also the tennis courts, so that was a priority in the asks of this year of upgrading the tennis courts and constructing those. Electrical systems and efficiency, looking at what we have for electrical systems, particularly lighting in our schools, a lot of it is old fluorescent lighting that is outdated and parts can't be purchased, so upgrading that. Life safety components, one of the big things there was the Montello fire alarm that we're looking at system, and then interior upgrades and renovations, one of the things that you'll probably saw in that LCIP was around bathrooms. A lot of our bathrooms were, designs were based on the 60s, 70s of when those buildings were built, and there's kind of different best practice for bathrooms for student safety and what have you, and so that was something that we put in there as well.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Mr. Dupree?
In reference to the 287 Main, I understand that the people that are now occupying Dingly Building are going to be moving in there. Now, there was mention that there was something that's going to happen with that building as far as renovations for students?
For the Dingly Building?
That's correct.
Yeah, so I think in our planning stages now, we wouldn't be looking at vacating the Dingly Building, but maybe looking at using that as a special purpose programming, so for our special ed students, and maybe some type of programming that we could do in that building.
And monetary funding, has that been included in any of the LCIP?
That has not, no.
Is there any intention of doing it?
Yeah, I think potentially there would be for doing that, but there's also, you know, some of these factors of, you know, what might be a way that we could do it through our operating budget, because we may be saving money by having students not being tuitioned to other programs and staying in districts, so could we put some of that forth in our operating budget?
Is there any purpose for that? I mean, as far as a student through a grade school, intermediates or special needs?
Yeah, as far as what grade level that would kind of be. I would think, just, and I'm spitballing a little bit here because I am getting a little out of my lane with programming type things, but I would say that this would probably be geared more towards elementary level.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Pine?
Since I sort of came into the meeting in a flurry here and didn't really get myself super organized, did we receive written response from the School Department for the questions from last night? No, that's what I thought.
And I apologize for, I didn't get from the email that I needed to have a written response for tonight, so I just happened to look on the website that you had a meeting, so I apologize, and I can get this into you with writing, so.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, one thing that I think was a theme for most of our questions last time was around sort of life expectancy of some of the things that you're looking to do, roof replacements, things like that, just to get a sense of, you know, what's the dollar amount and how far out will that, you know, get us in terms of not having, you know, high maintenance cost roof or a high maintenance cost tennis court or, you know, whatever it may be. I don't know if we have the time to sort of go through it on that level of detail, or if we want to just wait for written response, but there was something we were definitely interested in.
I think if you would like that level of detail in a written response, would have to ask the questions in that level of detail, and I don't think that we have.
Okay.
I think the question that we've asked is a little more overarching, and you started speaking, you started by speaking to that, which I appreciate. Public Works has done a heck of a job at a holistic facilities plan, and I'm appreciative of the fact that you are planning more holistically. I think you were planning more systemically, but I don't know that it is holistic in terms of when you look at all of the facility resources available to you, how are they looking at different programs that could get moved, and how, you might be thinking that way, but you might value the support of somebody who's not looking at a building by building and looking at capital needs assessment by facility, but is thinking about.
So, yeah, and that's, and that's, it would be completely holistic in what we're, and how we're planning on all these things. So, and to give ourselves some grace as far as leadership goes, it's, you know, it hasn't been a long time that we've been kind of guiding what Lewiston Public Schools is, so that's why I think when you're looking from an LCIP standpoint, we're really looking at things like building envelopes, so doors, windows, roofs, because we know we need the facilities, and so we've got to bring them to, you know, the upgrades so that they're, if it's a roof that had a 25-year lifespan and we're into 35 years, then we've got to do those things. So we're definitely looking at a holistic approach and how we're going to use all of our buildings, what schools will be what, and, you know, that is also hinging on a lot of policy as well. So, you know, if we did something different, completely different, had buildings that only served one grade level, that because of our redistricting and things like that, that would be a big undertaking for a school committee to put policies together to change the use of that building, really, so.
Mr. Pine, is there a different way to ask your question, or are you trying, what level of detail are you trying to?
I could just use a really specific example here, so the LHS roof replacement item, how long is that roof going to last for?
So, you know, roofs, I would say, you're going to hear from a contractor, it's like a 25-year investment, 25 to 30 years, usually warranty wise, you know, you're going to get a couple of years of a warranty, if you're doing a slate roof, you're going to be looking at a five-year type warranty that you're going to be asking for. But I think historically speaking, in my experience, in looking at schools, I mean, even if we look at technology and computers, a computer has a lifespan that the companies would tell you would be five years, and we've got computers probably that are operating that are 12 years, so, but I would say that a roofing contractor would tell us that a roof would be around a 25-year lifespan.
Got it. So all of the roofing upgrades that are included in here, you're sort of budgeting out that there will be a replacement cost in 25 years if you stay on that schedule, and we all know that things get pushed out.
Right, and who knows if I'll be here in 25 years.
Well, and I, so I also hear you saying, I think one of the questions that we had kind of fell under the philosophy of generally, like, are we putting a roof on a building or the building itself? Are we putting a nice 25-year roof on a 10-year lifespan of a building, and what I hear you saying is, based on a whole bunch of different factors, there is zero facilities under your care that you can't see a use for, and that the really important piece is making sure they're functional and safe.
Yeah, and even to talk about the Montello and LMS that we put in for a new construction project, they've got to come out with that list, then that list has got to be vetted and people can appeal the list and everything, and, you know, you're really looking at 10 years before we would break ground, and then you're looking at another, what, two years roughly to have that building be complete, so you're at a 12-year point there, you know, you're getting, you're closing in pretty quick on 25 years, and that's best case scenario, that's, if we were to get on the list and be high enough up, if things were to stay the way they were, add another six years on to that, so we would be at a 20-year period if we were going to get a building replaced by the state.
Thanks. Other questions or comments from the board? Yeah.
Just off the top of your head, of these projects, which would you rank as like the two or three least urgent?
Least? Oh, gosh.
Yeah.
We're talking about shooting the messenger here.
It's our task too, we understand the pain.
I'm not the one that put these up, I don't think, we've kind of gotten into a point of, you know, prioritizing them in that sense, but, you know.
I mean, you've had discussions, right, in general discussions about, we definitely need the roof today or next year.
And again, why that is kind of a difficult thing to answer is, last year, I think we got a $1.4 million allocation. Just in this year, because of our commitment with the city, the Franklin pasture tennis courts is over half of what we got allocated last year. And so it's, you know, the fire alarm system at Montello, I would like to be sooner, but we're going to next year try to put the engineering work in our operating budget and then have that a year later. I'd like to have that next year, and, you know, that's a good $200,000 ask. So I'm not trying to dodge, you know, where we're at with priorities, and I don't think I can answer that question without really having my team to kind of say, let's, let's look at what we're being pushed here.
So ultimately, that's basically what our recommendation is supposed to be to the City Council is, of this large, which ones can be removed, which ones might, you might want to consider being removed, so I just wanted your input.
Yeah, and I'll say that last year, the way that it happened with the City Council, I think that while we always, you know, it's a limited resource, but it was very helpful for, the City Council kind of came to us and said, well, here's a number that we would say for the schools to use for bonding, how would you allocate that with your projects? And, you know, that's when our team went back and said, okay, from a standpoint of planning for the future, like, we really have to sit down and say, you're not getting this this year, and you're not getting that that year. An example is the Longley, excuse me, the Geiger Playground, we dealt with this, the principal had followed the LCIP project process, which was a five-year plan, every year that was getting closer to the front of the line, and then because we could only have so much, that got kicked back a year, and then it got reduced, so that has been a process that we've followed in my, you know, three years of doing this.
Yeah.
When we look at the projects and whether it's an enhancement to a sports complex or if it's a life safety issue such as the fire and security system, my priority would be the life safety issues, all the way around, whatever department it is, whether it's school or any of the others. Also, over the years, and I've been on this board as early as 2009, not the complete time, in between, but there wasn't time, and I think Lucy will remember, that we didn't get a very good capital improvement program out of the schools. And the length of time, that came up here earlier, the longer, whether it's two years, three years, five years, it'd be nice to have a five year, since this is one of the things that I do in my career, and that is to monitor capital improvement programs, what are the expenses that go into keeping that maintained, it's always nice to know, are we replacing something sooner than we needed to, was the maintenance done correctly along the way? There should be a record-keeping, and I'm not sure that it exists, that if we're talking about roofs in general for all the different properties across town, the doors and windows could be another category, whatever the category is, I deal with equipment, so you may have some equipment when it comes to computers and other educational pieces, that's also at times a capital item. A lot of times it might be operational budget, but if it's going to be bonded, it's capital. So those are all the things that I'm looking at, and just another side note, when I see the reference to the $792,000 for the tennis courts, I've seen tennis courts come up again and again, whether it's the LCIP here on the Planning Board, or whether they're actually even, what's the phrase, going out to bid with the Finance Committee, it just seems like they come up a little too often. It just seems like they come up a little too often. So, that's one of the things that I wouldn't be looking at as a priority right now, especially in these tight financial times.
Thank you. My own feedback, in terms of where I would be making a recommendation to the city council and we'll finalize recommendations in our next meeting, which will be right before. I think you're right to prioritize envelopes and when you look at the requests for the school department, the tennis courts really do stick out as not life safety, not envelope. And I would struggle to make a recommendation to city council for that. Last call for Mr. Grant before we excuse him. Any other questions for the school department? Thank you for your time this evening.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
All right, so fellow board members, you do have a thick packet. I tried to keep up with all of the individual pieces that came in throughout the day. Does anyone have a different department that they'd like to start the next round of questions in?
Public Works.
Yes, doesn't that seem my deal since he's right there in front of us?
That's why I suggested it, because he's right there.
Kindly.
And we can pick on him.
Would you like to speak to any of the questions that you already answered for us at, at a high level before we just open up? Questions?
I think our, my understanding is, when did you get our response?
Earlier this week, or earlier, late last week.
I felt like many of them came in maybe as they came in.
It says January 23rd.
All right.
The memo, I don't think.
It's your memo from last Thursday.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I would say that we have been looking at, we do master plan, we have looking at facility plans. So our requests this year are a culmination of that. We have also tried to look at the needs. Some of these are moving ahead, master plans that the city initiatives are. So River Island Master Plan, trying to support development. So you'll see the gamut. Public Works, I believe we have eight divisions that we pretty much touch everybody within the city, whether you're a resident, whether you're a business, a nonprofit or a visitor, so. Really, it's all on the table. I'd rather not go into specifics and find out what you're looking for, but I do have my, some of my deputies and division heads behind me. So if I can't answer your question along with Brian, I'll defer to them and try to get your answer tonight. If not, we'll come back with some more information that, that you may be asking.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Thank you.
Just off the top of your head, what two or three projects would you say are the least urgent? Out of the ones for FY '26?
I can answer that question.
Just be aware that it's probably going to be a recurring question.
I can stop the answer to that question, remember Roy? Myself and Tracy Roy pared down a lot of the requests. You know, we talked about tennis courts, that's really, that thing is falling apart and the pickleball court is a huge attraction for our city, so that's why I left that in there. I trimmed a lot of these requests that came forward to, I don't know if you recall, last year we had a request of, I think, almost 34 million that we had to pare down. So what I've left on there really are a lot of the safety issues. You know, if we're talking about bridges or roads being washed away. So it's very hard to even have him pare that down even more because I've already done that. So I did present to you 34 million worth of LCIP requests this year, which we've done in the past, because my concern was presenting, you know, something a little more reasonable. But really, a lot of the stuff that they're asking for outside of maybe a new turf field and tennis courts, a lot of that is already life safety issues.
And I appreciate that and I don't, I don't doubt that you guys have gone through it and, and done as much as, as you could. To me, if, if the city council is asking for recommendations on what we can make.
And I'm just saying, I'm, I'm, I've just started that process. I think it may be, and I'm going to let him answer, but I think it's going to be difficult for him to say, yeah, let's not do this bridge, but then that bridge washes away and people can't get to their homes or the roadway. So it's, I think it's going to be a little harder for him to, in years past, what we've done has been a little different than what I've had them do this year.
Because I mean, my preference is obviously, I, I generally trust what the administration has come up with for improvement programs and, and what they think is important. For example, I agree, I think the tennis courts is a valuable investment. So I'm just trying to kind of get a gauge of, well, if we're going to, if this board is going to make a recommendation where, you know, what would the department head be like, oh, man, I wish they hadn't have done that? As opposed to, you know, us just going, well, I don't like, you know, I don't see tennis courts as a safety issue, so I'm not going to fund that personally. I, I'm not going to vote against it. I like the idea of funding it, but I just kind of wanted to get my.
I'll let Director Gagnon join in. I just wanted to preface his comments with what we've done already.
So, I will say that most of our direction that we do are either through regulatory requirements. We're trying to meet regulatory requirements that are state or federal. So it's everything from your sidewalks and ADA that the schools had talked about in their internal paths. We have citywide paths and walkways that we're dealing with as well as roads. So I, I would, I think we've pared that down and we've tried to, to be within, we're not asking for, for more than we would normally. Along with that, on the utilities side, water right now is utilizing funds from ARA and Federal Recovery Act money. So, we're doing okay on our transmission main, but we still have three miles of unlined cast iron pipe. So, those are ones that break and cause dirty water issues. On the sewer side, we're dealing with still compliance regulatory piece where we're trying, we have a combined sewer overflow, so we need to do separations, minimize discharges to the river as well as being compliant on our collection system. Our stormwater systems, a lot of them were put in. We're trying to deal with what's state put in, corrugated metal pipe. Those things are eroded, deteriorated, collapsing, so. We're trying to stay ahead of that because those are, those are cavins. I bring up the utilities because that's everything underneath our paving. So if we don't do our utility work, then when we want to do our paving program, we're just putting pavement on top of a bad structural road. So, I think the engineering division along with the rest of Public Works have really prioritized what needs to come first in, in the multi-year planning to be able to get a streetscape done that is going to be a long lifecycle cost, right? So the last thing we want to do is pave, curbing and get a streetscape done with landscaping and, and try to have other amenities. With that, we do have traffic signals and streetlights, so that's another safety concern. We're not adding streetlights, but we do have 40 to 50-year-old primary and secondary. We did get new LED lights back in the early, you know, 2020 timeframe. So, great, we have new fixtures. Our poles are old, our, our lines that are providing power are old, our switchgear is old. So, these are things that take time when they come down during a windstorm or if they fail, they're not going to come from a, a stockyard in Portland. Some of the switchgear are 18 to 24 months out. I've talked this, you know, we're trying to stay ahead and keep our utilities resilient. If we talk about structural in the buildings, so we're trying to, to meet new use and whether it's rec department and, and what they have going on, whether it's Franklin pasture, some of the fields and safety and whether it's people coming to do sporting events or just, or just observe. So really, I, I can't give you a list. I can tell you that our staff have really tried to be fiscally responsible, but also give you the priorities. Our ask for a street paving was a lot higher and, and Brian did speak to that where they've pared that down. Whether we move some into operations, it's paid for and that remains to be seen. But we're trying to leverage all federal and state dollars when it comes to, whether it's utility projects, but definitely when it comes to paving. So if it's a DOT project, we're paying 80 or 90% is getting paid by the state and feds. On an MPI, it's a 50/50 share and then the rest of the street paving you see is, is on the city funds.
Thank you. Mr. Dupree?
Mr. Gagnon, in reference to the River Road project, can you give us an update as far as what's been going on there? And how will the LCIP this year, or '26, affect what's going to happen out there?
So we're talking about the storm drain culvert on River Road? Which, which project are we talking about specifically?
The whole movement of Public Works from Adams Avenue out to River Road.
So there was a master plan done a couple of years ago, kind of looking at our facility down at Adams Avenue. It was built in the, the late 40s. That facility was added on as different services were added. We're, outgrew that, we actually had a, a pit where we had storage there and that's where the Walmart distribution center was built. When that took place, the TIF would just leverage to be able to build the operations center that we're talking about on River Road. So we got a new sand salt shed, some garages, some office space there. Our fuel island is, our fuel station, our underground tanks need to come out by the spring. So we've been working to get that fueling island and where do we put it? We put it up at the operations center because we had space. So that has recently been installed, that'll be, it's active now kind of internally. We're working to roll that out to the other outside vendors, sheriff and other people that utilize that fuel station. So that's part of a master plan to phase in. So, we understand that it's a big ask for a new facility. We're still in the, the planning of that. The next feast that we're asking in here is the wash facility. I believe this is our third year for asking for that wash facility. We retrofitted the existing Public Works garage, the back bay area. It's a heated space, it's a fairly large space. We, several years ago, I think it's probably 10 years ago. It's problematic. We can only wash very few vehicles per day just because of the size of the vehicles. Depending on this time of year, we can't leave it out overnight. It has hydraulics, it'll just freeze up, we want it to dry. And ergonomics and safety. It is a tight space, so luckily we haven't had any injuries, but the concern is, you know, it's not efficient and we want to keep people safe. So this new wash facility would allow not just all of Public Works vehicles to get through there quickly, but other vendors and the other customers in our area. So, it, this is built for a large fleet vehicle, so we have a catwalk up top. It's got underbody washed and it's very efficient. So, that would extend the life of our vehicles. Right now, our municipal garage is dealing with parts that are just corroding out before wearing out. We have multiple examples. So, really, the, the next phase to that is to moving the rest of Public Works, the primary piece, the first one what we'd want is the municipal garage. The vehicles that we're servicing are larger. A regular halftime three-quarter truck is coming in much larger than it used to. And, and the different vehicles that we're utilizing, we have one bay that the fire department can bring their truck in. So, trying to, we actually lose a bay because they're trying to move large tires or large heavy industrial parts onto these vehicles to repair and you can't get to them because the bays are so close.
In regards to the Public Works garage itself, what was determination for putting on a new roof when the possibility of moving the entire facility over to the new place within a few years?
So our facility manager has been looking at all our roofs of all the city buildings outside of the school department. What we've seen, and my recommendation to leave it on there is, there's going to, if, if things go well and the economy's booming and the vote is taken and we build a new facility, leaving a crumbling facility or the time in the, before we've moved over, we're at end of life on the roof. So we have patching on there and repairs is, is planned in, in the operating budget. It's end of life, so we put it in there to replace the roof because if, if the new facility gets kicked down two or three more years, we will need a new roof. And I think something we've learned on Bates Mill number five, we had grant money, the, the building wasn't torn down, but the roof got to the point where it was leaking. The electrical components inside the building have been compromised. So, that roof was replaced this summer, great, but we weren't able to re-energize things inside that building and there's other issues because of a leaky roof. So, if this facility has a future use, we don't want this roof to leak. One, while we're in there having a mold issue with staff. And the second would be, it is a wooden structure, you know, so rot and everything of the roof structure. And then if it has any value for anybody else in the future to you, this seller had a different use.
Thank you.
At our last meeting, we talked quite a bit with excitement about the wash facility. Do you have a sense, when I, when we look at the replacement of vehicles, how long until you start to see that pay out by elongating the timeline of your equipment?
Chris Phil, do you want to, you want to go to the mic?
Sorry. Thanks.
Phil Brienza is our fleet superintendent and he's the one that sees all the problems.
Yeah. It's, I think we're keen to make sure that investments are investments and either diversify income opportunities or safeguard our, our investments. So, it's something we're interested in.
A lot of the existing vehicles, the damage is kind of done, the older vehicles. I mean, we'll see some sort of improvement in cost savings as far as rotted parts, I mean, on the newer trucks right away. I mean, we've replaced components on trucks that are three or four years old because they're rotted out. So, I mean, the newer trucks will stand a better chance. I mean, we'll still replace these components, but not as many times as we do. I mean, we replace the transmission bolts every three to four years in every truck there because the bolts just rotted out.
And Phil, how long does it take you to do some of that work? Doesn't that tie up your crew quite extensively?
Just to change the transmission filter in a large truck should take half an hour, 45 minutes maybe because it's just 12 bolts. But it may take two days because once you start taking those bolts out, you're going to take every bolt out of that transmission, there's a lot of them. And you have to weld nuts on them, you have to drill the center of them out, put E-Z-E out and take them out one at a time, which could take two days, you know, for a simple job. But, you know, I, the bolts thing, I can use that, that all the time. Because, I mean, how many times you replace the bolts in your car, you don't.
No.
We do every three or four years. Now, a truck that we're going to keep for 20 years, we're going to do that four times. You know, it's probably around a thousand dollars, a little bit more to buy the bolts and the labor to do it. So, I mean, it all adds up, I mean, it's. Yeah. The big trucks have an emission system similar like a catalytic converter. It's called a diesel exhaust, exhaust filter. That's the exhaust system in a truck. The smaller trucks, they're about $12,000. The larger trucks, they're $20,000. We replace them probably, right now, the way things are going, two to three times in the life of the truck. You know, so, I mean, all those figures add up to some serious money. I figure it's about between $80,000 and $100,000 a year in rusted and rotted components that we replace. I mean, we don't replace the brake valves in a truck because the part failed. We replace it because it rotted out and it's leaking air.
Yeah.
You know, so you replace a thousand dollars with a brake valves in a truck, you know, three or four times in the lifetime of a truck. You know, it's, we need to be able to clean this stuff, we need to be able to do it better, we need to be able to do it quicker because it just can't stay the way it is, we can't keep, keep it, the cost of everything is just so high.
It sure beats the heck out of the impact of a tennis court. Love it.
Well, I'd, I'd like to add that we're, we're doing preventative maintenance. As, you know, the smaller trucks in the, in the vehicles in the fleet, those go through the commercial car washes in the city. We, we've got a program for coupons and we take our regular-sized vehicles through there after storms and get them cleaned off. A new vehicle comes in, we're applying undercoating to it and, and reapplying, you know, in, through the summer months before the next winter. So, we're doing as much as we can. We actually have a wash solution that after you wash a vehicle, there's still a white haze even with a pressure washer, soap and warm water. So, we're, we're doing as much as I think is reasonable with the equipment and the time we have. So that's why we're here asking about that.
And this, the wash.
You guys heard me say it was a good investment.
Right.
Okay, just checking.
I'm just going to add, this wash bay, and you were probably here, and Lucy, I mean, this has been something that's been pushed off. I know Phil Nato, 15-plus years ago, the city was looking to invest in this. It's been pushed off and pushed off and this was one that I felt was really important.
Yeah.
Because the return that we're going to get from the amount of time and money that's spent on repairing that, that these trucks will, you know, he says a 20-year life, maybe we get even longer out of them because of the, the savings from just that, the salt just corrodes those things. I think last year, Phil brought in some, you know, show and tell or some pieces of how rotten these things are, how they have to work out.
Yeah, thank you. Mr., yes, Mark, you had a question, right?
I think, if I can, it's actually two different items, but on the wash facility, yeah, it was 15 years ago, in 2009 on the finance committee. And we were talking about fire trucks and fire truck replacements and how can we keep them longer because of the price tag on a brand-new one? I remember seeing some of the material come in on, the rundown on how much to maintain a vehicle and sometimes I look at those numbers and I say, well, it sounds like a lot of money, but versus what is the new cost of new and what but versus what is the new cost of new, and what is the amortization on the lifespan of that vehicle, and maybe maintaining is still a cheaper option. But when you're staring at a request for a bid, the impact is, go ahead and buy the new, which I don't like to do. And I've been an advocate of the wash facility since the beginning. I was disappointed it didn't get done when it was first presented. It would have been a whole lot less expensive than doing it now. When we see a one point, what is it, 2,570 million?
1.4, I believe.
1.4. And on the municipal garage, and the plan, and I see out in 2028 is the 42 million number for moving the facility. And the discussion about roofs, and how long roofs will last, and should we do it now? I saw something go into the Martell School only a couple of years before it was decommissioned. We never got a value on that capital improvement program in the basement of the brick structure. You remember that item, and I can't really call it by its specific project name, but it was something to do with the classrooms that were in the sort of basement, in the brick portion. And you say something about the fuel island. That means the fuel island in the current facility will be dug up soon?
Correct. The fuel tanks that are underground, I actually put those in as a young project engineer, and...
And how long ago was that?
Just a couple of years ago.
I've been here, coming on 33 years. So they're past their life. DEP says they have to be out this, in '25. So the new tanks, the new fuel island is built because the cost, and there's, where do you put it? At the time, there was one tank or two, and we repositioned some traffic flow and whatnot. That's not available to us with the use down at Public Works.
And so that's in the ground on River Road right now?
Correct.
And it's in a place that kind of goes with the project plan that's all laid out for the future?
Correct. When I started last year, the plans were ongoing, and it's been, there was a lot of work by staff and consultants to make sure that this was put in a place where it wouldn't disrupt outside or internal traffic flow, but be easy for outside agencies to fuel up.
And you won't have to sink more cost into the future development because it's in the right place to begin with.
Correct.
And a disposition plan for the current facility. We see things like we're moving out of the multipurpose to build a new Connor School, and next thing you know, the school department's growing more facilities, taking out more plots across the city that could be used for capital invest, private investment, I should say, and becoming a tax base. So I'm wondering if Adams Street could add to our tax base at some point when the migration is done.
Yeah, I don't think we have a plan. I think you're probably referring to the interview in the Sun Journal that Director Gagni took part in. I think that was more of...
I'm not familiar with it.
Well, he was asked, what do you think's going to happen with the building?
Okay.
He just threw out a couple of off-the-cuff ideas. But that has not been determined what would be the step with the current building. If it is approved, it goes through referendum. I would be surprised if it happens in 2028, but I would see that we would then have a sit-down and more of a plan in terms of what the disposition...
But it should be part of the planning process.
It is part of the planning process, but in terms of what we'd actually do with that building, we don't know at this time.
It'd be nice to know what we're going to do with it before...
Oh, I totally agree. Before we, yeah.
So we don't end up with a 35 in the year, Mill 5.
Yes, I, that would be great.
We do know that our current plan is to have some of our smaller vehicles that are regularly going to sidewalk sweeping, sidewalk plowing, as well as going over to Franklin Pasture and our multiple downtown parks. That's something that, right now, we're able to fuel up, drive across, and then get on to the facility. We're looking to have a very small storage somewhere in the area, so maybe part of this parcel could be utilized for that. And the rest of it, like Mr. O'Malley said, is it's full gamut. It would be nice to see it as tax property.
You just mentioned sidewalk plowing. It reminded me, I'm impressed with the snow, the sidewalk plowing this season. Is it because we had late storms? Is it because the budget is still flush, looking towards June 30?
Because they didn't happen on a weekend. That's always helpful.
Storms have been three or four inches, I think that's helpful as well.
I can tell you that the staff has coordinated things well, and the timing of the storms has helped us as well.
Yeah, because in past years, they wouldn't get plowed for days. And I'd come out the morning after, and they're already plowed, and the storm's just finished. And I'm impressed with that.
Did you have one more question?
One more item with respect to the, to the garage facilities and such. We should be looking at whatever infrastructure programs the feds may be coming out with in the next couple of years. Get on top of those grants, if there's something that we can put in a request for to help with our stormwater combination programs, or the wash facility, the garage facility, anything, public works, schools, et cetera. We should be not missing our opportunity on federal grant programs.
Thank you. I think I saw questions, I think it was Alex, and then Amy.
Yeah, just as a larger process question, you know, education for the audience and for the rest of the board. How does Public Works handle grant opportunities? Do you expect your department heads to sort of keep their ear to the ground, or do you have a dedicated grants person who's trying to keep their finger on the pulse?
Well, we're one department, so it's my job along with the rest of the division heads who are expertise in their area, to be looking out for them, definitely. We've considered several on the utility side. We've also partnered with other departments, so planning and code, they've been, you know, looking into EV chargers and things like that. One thing that I've seen in my time here is that we are very good at bonding. Our bond rates are very low. We're a large community, and we have a lot of advantages because of that. We've tried to use some SRF funds in the past, and when you do get some, it depends on how much forgiveness, used to be a grant, now they call it forgiveness. We found that most of the time, the extra requirements that go into a state or federal funds make the project a real pain to administer and actually get out on the street. But we are definitely open to it, and definitely looking forward to see what comes and what we can take advantage of. Past years, you know, with all, like I said, with the regulations, the kind of unfunded mandates, and it gets put on the utility payers for that.
And to follow up that, we do not have a dedicated grant writer for the city.
So if anyone viewing this at a future point on YouTube wants to lift up a grant opportunity for you, they could reach out to Parkley, to your department?
Absolutely. Just let us know.
Thanks. Was that your last question, Mr. Pine?
I had some more, but let's, okay. Looking at the written comment, our replies here really quick. There's a response around ADA accessibility on all the sidewalk repairs, and the response is just continuity with previous and future projects is always a consideration. Just going one step beyond that, is there any sort of plan for the sidewalk network? You know, I think often we think about vehicular roads and sort of planning transportation patterns there. Is the same type of work done for sidewalks, or is that not really a thing?
So we have everything mapped. So at least, as well as the last time we did pavement ratings, we also looked at doing sidewalk ratings and really getting an idea of what are our conditions of our sidewalks. In addition to that, we've done a Safe Space, Safe Streets For All.
Yep.
That study's ongoing, near its end, to get a final report, maybe on hold for a while. As well as some downtown village planning for some internal, or downtown movements. So I think we're trying to be opportunistic, but realize that what we've done on the city side is looked on a small, local street that's 100% city funds. Not, if we apply for CDBG, we try to leverage CDB funds. We try to do it as part of a project, whether it's a local development, like you see coming on in our downtown now with new buildings, or whether it's a DOT project, like it's going on next summer on Main Street. We're trying to be opportunistic and spend the money where it's needed. But an actual movement plan, we're having a difficult time to connect things together, but we're always trying to do better.
Yeah, that's awesome. That's awesome. And, you know, I guess context for other folks, I've done work with pedestrians and stuff in the past, and like, having a map of all the sidewalks is an amazing thing. A lot of communities don't even have that, so really kudos to the group.
Right now, we understand that utility poles in sidewalks is an issue, encroachments on the back of walk is an issue, hydrants in locations are an issue. We're actually, I'm trying to put something together so we can prioritize those and put some numbers to them. Some of the new projects, I know that just came about, and we had some underground power, risers on the pole, and that pole's in the middle of the sidewalk. That happened because DOT wants us so much back from the face of curb, as well as other encroachments. So our staff, our engineering as well, utility staff, we're trying to make sure that doesn't happen again, and we're trying to move the ones that we can. But we, unless we're paying for a pole to be moved, there was a pole just hit on Sebass Street by a tractor trailer last week. When you have five overhead lines coming in and converging on one point, and it's in the back of walk as it is, it's hard to move that pole. But if we're not plowing sidewalks in the winter, it's because of, we're trying to deal with those issues and have better sidewalks and better access. I will say, in the small neighborhoods where there's two sidewalks and they're both in poor condition, we're trying to rebuild a sidewalk on the side that's going to give better ADA compliance, which means away from retaining walls, away from the utility poles, we'll probably abandon that sidewalk and prioritize and have one good sidewalk on one side that's going to meet ADA.
Wonderful. And then last question was around, it was in the vehicle section, so it's page 75, and we had a question around the 14-passenger van for the Recreation Department. And I guess I'm just, want a little more context on the answer. The answer almost sort of felt like we shouldn't get the van, was the justification, that, you know, the garage is short-staffed, and now's not the time to add more vehicles. And I'm wondering if I'm just not reading it quite right, or if that's something we should take as sort of a signal for our recommendations to the council.
Great point. Does kind of read that way.
Yeah. Sure, come on up. This is Meagan Bates, Deputy Director for Public Works.
So this is an important piece for the seniors program. It will allow seniors to be able to get aboard a vehicle where they're not bending over, and they have an easy way of getting off and on. So from a Recreation Department perspective, this is an important piece. From Public Works' perspective, when we're looking at the amount of mechanics that we have and how many that we need, and generally, when we add a piece of equipment or a vehicle, it's to help with efficiencies, it's to replace a piece of equipment that should be replaced. So that's why you see the description.
So this is, we have a vehicle that's taking up too much staff time. We should get a newer vehicle, or...
What I also added to that was, the hope would be that we would be fully staffed by the time that piece of equipment needs significant maintenance or service.
Got it. Okay. Does the city ever lease vehicles for the fleet, or is it, are we really more of a...
The way the municipal garage is set up is that we're actually the fleet. It's owned by the municipal garage, and then it's rented or leased out to different divisions or departments within the city. And that's how this works. So it'd be owned by the municipal garage and rented at a cost or leased to the rec department, so.
Got it. Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up on that? Amy, do you mind? I know you were next. Have, without knowing the frequency of, and I look forward to a good senior program when I'm older, but not knowing the frequency of the use of that bus, what would it look like for the city's rec department to lease that from a motor coach company in our community? If it's, you know, twice a month, instead of purchasing it, having to maintain it, and all those pieces, might that be more cost-effective, or at least in the next year or two, till you're fully staffed?
Right, so I can have that conversation with Director Welch. I'll be meeting with her this week on a different topic, so I can take that up with her. We can check into rentals.
Can you follow...
I don't know how often she would need it.
I can say they also use it during the summer months, when they take the kids up to Pettingill School Park. They transport them back and forth a lot, as opposed to, and they bring them down to the, to Kennedy Park for the pool, because they'll have, you know, for the summer camps. I know they use it a lot during the summer as well. But we can get more information from Nicole, who's the director.
I've heard it already a couple of times today, where we, we as taxpayers, pay our tax bill, and we're explained to you later in the process about how X amount of my tax bill is the school, and X amount is everything else. And I've heard that we have resources for engineering that can assess roofs, and yet we don't have those necessarily applied to our school department. I would hazard a guess that there are a number of vans and 14-passenger buses sitting in our community that we, the taxpayers, have paid for that might not be considered as some of the options, because it's in that department, in the way that we've looked at other resources. And so I would also, either answer to, or either approach would be helpful in writing as our next meeting is the final meeting that will make recommendations.
Yeah. And right above that, there was actually a similar question, around trash pickup in one of the compactor vehicles. So, you know, if there was sort of a, you know, quick gut check of having Casella do that, that would be interesting. But enough of my time here.
Yeah, thanks for your patience, Amy.
So back to the wash facility, which I love. From a sequencing standpoint, if you had the green light on that right now, like realistically, how long would it take to actually get that facility built and operational?
Come on up, Jeff.
Jeff Booley, city engineer and director of asset management. Hi. We, we're still really in the initial phases of design. We haven't got into any sort of detailed design on that yet, but I would, the hope is that we could be able to complete that over the course of this year, to get it out to bid next winter for construction in '26 would be my goal.
My follow-on question is, is it even feasible to consider, there are a lot of new vehicles in this capital improvement plan, right? So can we postpone some of those until the wash facility is built so that the new ones are cared for correctly?
Some of the vehicles that we have in there are similar to what we described earlier with Phil as far as end of life. So we're looking at frame issues. We try to use a vehicle and have a trade-in value. Some of those vehicles get sidelined and just parked over at the op center because they're no longer will pass inspection. So I can let Phil detail, if you have specific vehicles about, especially questions about a certain vehicle, but...
May I try restating that question? It'd be really helpful if you could look at your vehicle replacement program and say, which are the ones that are like rusted out, need to be replaced, and which are the ones that we could smartly wait another 12 months for, for next year, or even two years for your washing facility?
That's pretty much what we do annually, is look at those vehicles that we don't think we can keep on the road and keep operational in the next year or two cycle without spending a lot of money. We've had some large trade-in vehicles that it actually made more sense for us to repair the vehicle because of the trade-in value. And I hate sinking money into a bad vehicle, but if it has other good components, we'd rather keep it on the road. And we're keeping vehicles 10 to 12 years.
Right.
So we can look at the list more.
Yeah, that'd be great, because similarly, to your point about renting the van, you know, if we already know we have trouble maintaining the gear because we don't have a good wash facility, why don't you just lease it for a couple of years, and then buy...
I can also say that, you know, kudos to Mr. Markot, because we have been dealing with this for like 15 years. So if we keep delaying something, and we need time to design it and build it, so if we don't build it this year, I mean, there's no commitment on the CIP, and that's some of the issues, is that...
I think you're hearing a commitment to the wash facility, and I think that we approve a 1.5 roughly million-dollar budget, like is projected, for the next four years, just for vehicle replacements. This is, I think, really just about the vehicles.
Yep.
Did you have anything else?
Nope, not for capital.
Anything from you two, Public Works-related? Zoe?
I do have one question. I was just having a hard time picturing for page 82, the Franklin Pasture security fence, 10-foot replacement, and also closing up some of the areas. the Franklin Pasture Security Fence, 10-foot replacement and also closing up some of the areas. I was just wondering if that's going to cut off pedestrian access from either Karen Avenue or Birch Street for maybe students who walk to the high school in the morning or folks taking adult ed classes. Like I cut across that. So yeah, I'd love to understand that better.
Thank you.
So Deputy Director Bates is passing out the proposal that the CIP is based on. I'll let her speak to it once. You guys have that image?
So access for the walkers, the students, the gates will be open during particular times and then they will be shut to keep the building secure. So in the morning when the students are walking to get to class, they'll be open. And at a particular time in the afternoon, they'll be open again, but other than that, they'll be shut. And then there's programming that takes place, so the gates will be open during programming.
Okay. So it does sound like student access probably won't be affected, but for example, adult ed access for like a 7:00 PM class will be, probably.
They, for an adult ed, they can get access through the recreation department and get it scheduled?
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? For me? No. Any other from this side for Public Works? Where we let a whole slew of the people in our audience free for the evening?
Just a question. In reference to the sale of vehicles at auction, why is the money going back to general fund and not into vehicle fund?
That is how our city accounts have been working for decades, so.
That's a classic, that's how we've always done it response.
It certainly is.
Yeah. So there's room to maybe do it differently in a way that funds your budget back to you?
That request has been made by the department. It's on the revenue side, so it goes back into the source revenue account that funded it.
Kind of redundant.
Good opportunity to look at in future years. Anything else from the board for anything Public Works-related? No. Mr. O'Malley, is there any reason you would like any of the Public Works folks to stick around for the remainder?
If you're done with questions for Public Works?
Yeah. Well, then with our gratitude, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, just kidding, Mr. Markot.
Having difficulty forming the thought, but I'm thinking of the wash facility and the question that was just asked because I've got a friend that keeps hounding that issue all the time with respect to, yeah, the money should go back into a reserve account, not for that purpose. And as a personal viewpoint, I like running a vehicle until it's dead, not for a trade-in value. Because I think there's more value to keep it until it's dead than giving somebody else an opportunity to resell it as a secondhand vehicle to whomever.
That example I used was a very, very specific vehicle, I believe is our Vector. So, you know, having a, it was a half a million dollar expense. And while it had some value, we did some repairs to keep it functional, so we could sell it versus just salvage it.
And as far as what I think I'm hearing tonight on the wash facility, I'd like, like maybe a separate motion as a priority, like a super priority, because there is a good return on investment there.
Yep, thank you.
From a process point, Shelley, what is the best way for us to make recommendations, either to potentially recommend cut or to recommend as a priority for our process, both for tonight and next time, to carry forward to the city council? I know that we don't need to vote necessarily, but what's the best way for you to track it and for us to show that indication?
Good question. I mean, if it's a recommendation that the board is in agreement with and you want me to, you know, take the notes right now, I can do that and we can track that. And then next meeting, we can start with any things that you've agreed to this meeting. Or the board could put it in writing and have it available for the next meeting.
Could you or Linda, who might be reviewing this later, make a note? I've heard some importance around the tennis courts as well as the washing facility. Are two areas where there's been a lot of dialogue and are, I think, obvious starting points to form a clear recommendation next time?
When you say some importance, with general consensus?
I mean, we would be aiming to have a discussion to narrow the language around our recommendations next time and I'm just hoping you can help us capture the moments. I'm sure notes will fill in the rest, but if I was to hazard a guess without running into a full motion and discussion, I would think there's some questions that we have around the tennis courts and that there's a lot of excitement around the wash facility?
Okay. So the questions you have around the tennis courts, those are not something that you?
We don't have questions we need response to. We just have points that we'd like to discuss as we form our recommendation. With gratitude, ladies and gentlemen of Public Works, thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, enjoy whatever remains of your Monday evening. In terms of areas that there were questions that we've received written responses to, the airport was a question that was asked and answered. I'm curious if that was satisfactorily answered. Pretty small amount and it's the only thing the airport's asking for. Was there any other discussion about that? Mr. Dupree?
I have a question. Mr. O'Malley, in regards to the airport with the recent announcement from the Airport Advisory Board that they wouldn't be considering taking on additional services, commercial services?
Commercial services, yeah.
How is that going to impact?
I don't think that's going, I think that was already in their plan. That was in their master plan not to do the commercial services, so this is still going to all be needed.
So it's not going to affect any of the hangars or the?
No, no. I think, I think their master plan was old and they've updated it. And, you know, they probably would have been asking for more hangars if they were to do the commercial service.
Thank you.
If anyone does have a specific question that they'd like to go to, otherwise, I'd like to discuss the 911 response, which I think was a pretty honest, I don't have all the answers yet, response. This is about the lifetime of the new facility. How has that facility serves current plus potential additional calls? Is there anything you wanted to add there and maybe even what would it take to know and how might that inform the request timeline?
Well, that building is owned by the city. We attempted to sell it probably five, six years ago and there was no takers. So at that time, Ed Barrett was the city administrator. We did, if you all, if you remember, it was the former courthouse. We, it's been outfitted. We're actually leasing space in there to Main Drug Enforcement Agency. We have some selective enforcement or specialized teams from the police department in there. They'll all be moving over to the new police department building at Mill 5. Once that opens, we possibly have a move-in date there for March. The downstairs is, got some storage in there, but it's large enough, I think, to handle the 911 center even down the road. I mean, we have not expanded. I know that they've tried to because of the increase in calls for service, wanted to add a position or two. That's been denied the last couple of years. So in reality, if you wanted to fit another two or three people, there's more than enough room in there. You know, the initial plan was to put this into the public safety building that Auburn is building, but I think the expense was a little too much, so it's actually a cheaper option for us to access 85 Park Street and make that the location. It's had some improvements. It's had some HVAC improvements, so we could lease to MDA and have folks in there. It's a building from the 1970s. But really, if you walk in there, it's really just a big open space, former courtrooms that have been now just turned into office space. So I think, I think the life of it is, I don't think it's undersized. I think it'd be fine. I mean, I would like to see it taken advantage of, would get some life down there. The employees would need to use the parking garage right there and get something in there. Because right now we have, you know, undercover police officers, drug agents in there, but this would get some more life into that.
Just blew all their covers.
Everybody knows that. I'm not giving out any, I'm not giving out any trade secrets.
Thank you. I think that's really helpful. I'd like to move to economic development. The biggest line item on there is a 5.2 million dollar piece, but it's really only $150,000 city request and that's the Riverfront Island Implementation Plan. We had a lovely workshop at city council last week.
We did, yes, Tuesday.
Yeah. And so I would just ask if there's any questions around economic and community development from the board? Further explanation or detail? I think we got pretty robust ones. Yes, Amy?
Yeah, I had a question about the red shop. And I, because we're reallocating fund from the red shop to two other projects in the current request. And without knowing what's going on there, it's hard to take funding away from that.
We're not requesting funds for the red shop. That was the last, last year the city council removed those requests. So the city has done repairs to the red shop, you know, and work underneath. If you folks aren't familiar with in terms of the canals and I forget what the little levers are that, you know, control the flow of the water, there's some technical term, but my engineers all just left.
Penn stock.
Penn stock, that's it. Member Pine. But yeah, we're not looking to put additional funding into that. That's why this, last year, the city council took that funding, that request away.
So that was put into some reserve fund that now is being accessed by economic development?
Sounds like the request was never approved.
No, the request was never approved. There was an LCIP request last year for the red shop and then that was, request was rescinded.
Got it. Thank you.
Very helpful. Any other questions for economic development?
I know if there are particular questions that, you know, once you folks read through this, you can send them to Shelley and we can fire it back off to economic development and get you some follow-ups if you have that, but.
So we've covered just about everything except transit and assessing, does anyone? And fire, just to be holistic. Does the board have any questions for Administrator O'Malley?
Do you know much about transit?
I do know a little bit about it. I'm on the Transit Committee.
Yes, yes, yes. I sort of recall that, so thanks for confirming. I remember, I think one of the responses from them was that, yeah, in past years, it's been underfunded and it's a sort of a catch-up funding or is that not part of the?
We did get an email today.
Yeah, there was an email today, but what we, what happens?
Here, pass it along to him.
Is every year we do the 50 grand, so we're gradually building up to when we need a new bus because the buses are very expensive. Those purple buses, Lewis and Abin owns. So it gets very expensive. And there was an email, if you haven't, you can read it, but there's some improvements we're doing to a couple of bus stations and stops. We're improving the technology where, I don't know if you know, but if you don't ride the bus, but you can now actually use an app on your phone to pay because, you know, not a lot of folks carry cash anymore. But we're going to actually improve that. We got some funding from the state in terms of tracking people where they get on, where they get off, our ridership. Because we really don't have a lot of those, that information because our system is so antiquated. You know, the money that we have here is to, for the future, because these buses are so expensive. I know there've been a lot of questions about the electrical. I don't know if you've seen the school buses that came into this? I mean, the cold weather just does a real number on them. And the expense of, for an electric bus compared to a diesel bus is really high. Because we did actually look into that last year and it was, it was almost double the price. So and the technology, my concern as well is the technology, because then you have to have a location where you can charge these buses and with the cold weather, they don't keep the charge as long. So then you need two of them to do the job of what one of them does and then where do you charge them? You know, there was different technology of you drive up and it's, you drive over a charger, but then with the snow removal. So it's really, I don't think the technology's there for those of us who are in cold temperature, cold weather climates like we are up here. And I think a perfect example is all those school buses that the state caught and they can't even drive them and the company went out of business, I think, I read the other day. But this is so, when we need somebody, you know, that we have the money. So that's why we, each city does 50 grand to move it forward.
It did sound like the director who wrote the email to us felt like the $50,000 per city per year contribution was enough for the planned?
Yes, yeah.
Purchase of new ones.
That would be, I think Larry Allen sent that email, but there's an email if you haven't seen it.
No, it's right here. It's the same. And it's nice to see that it's sort of split between both maintenance and then also expansion stuff. So, yeah, that's great to see.
Mr. Markot?
There's also, if I interpreted this right earlier this afternoon, the memo from Larry Allen.
Yep.
That there was reference to the need to replace one or two vehicles in the current fiscal year, correct?
No, we don't need to, no. Not a bus this year.
Okay. Not because?
I can re-rate, I don't believe so.
So when I saw the fiscal year '26, which we're doing fiscal year '26 right now. And it says that would leave like 35 to 50,000 in capital funding matched to be provided by the city of Lewiston.
Yep.
Now, if that doesn't happen, have we borrowed the $50,000 and it's sitting in a fund for the next year or is it foregone as one of those bonding cost savings and then next year the 50,000 will be there again?
I'll have to check on that. I'm not sure it's sitting here.
Because what I was hearing just a few minutes ago was, it sounded like we were accumulating the 50 until we needed it.
That's what we are doing.
Because the way that I read the memo was that that would be our share of a typical bus purchase. Because the rest of it is basically funded by a grant.
Right, we get the grants from.
Which, just to kind of piggyback back to the other item, whenever I see a $150,000 investment to triangulate, what was the number, 5.2 million, that's the way to go.
Yeah.
Thanks. Other questions for Administrator O'Malley? I have one.
What's that?
It is probably buried in the first four pages, which are dense with lovely information, so my apologies. I'm looking for like conversational answer to this question. Of the total proposed requests that we're reviewing, what is the total amount that can be approved to stay within the 80%? Or to put it another way, what's the cut goal?
It's on page nine.
Page nine.
See? Thank you.
Right, that, right, that's why.
So you just noted a significant amount of work done prior to us seeing these and each department had essentially said, it's already been cut and there's nothing left to cut. So is the recommendation go over the 80% in terms of the way, the philosophical approach?
Okay. And that's what I did when I spoke earlier. You used to see 7 million.
No, thank you for doing most of the work.
Chop, chop, chop. And I'm like, okay, that makes no sense to me. I mean, I wasn't the city administrator at the time and I'm the acting city minister today right now, so I said, this isn't realistic. Yeah, so I wanted to get it as close to the 80% that I could. But as I said earlier, I think there were some safety issues here. I really am supportive of this, the wash station. But, you know, there were some safety issues in this that I felt like, okay, I'm going to leave this in, I'm going to let that, the city council make the recommendation. So if they all vote to say, okay, we're going to go, you know, 2 million over, is a lot better than going, you know, 35 million over. So I think that's when, that's where their position is. That's what they're elected for, to make those hard decisions of, okay, are we going to go over, are we going to keep it at this? And if we do keep it at this, they're the ones that are going to hear the grief about no pickleball court or, you know, that kind of stuff. But that's what they're elected for. So that's what I've tried to do to, I'm not giving you as much to cut as you have in years past, which you normally were cutting, okay, 14 million, 16 million, whatever that, and I thought that was a waste of your time. And I thought it would be easier if we had that number much, as close as I could without having a life safety issue, having just Brian O'Malley make that decision. That's why I brought that number in a lot lower.
Yeah, thank you. Joey? Thanks.
That's basically what I've been thinking about, you know, over the weekend is, I'm not really sure what the point of my recommendation is. I mean, my question to you is, are your department heads all competent? Have they all looked at grant funding opportunities? Have they all considered their mandates, their legal mandates? Have they considered all other types of sources? Have they actually looked at this bonding? I assume that that has gone on.
And it has.
So why would I make any recommendation other than what you've done?
And before I made any, I mean, they had their wish list and then, but I met with each department head and said, okay, we can't do this, we can't do this, we got to bring this down. You know, where can we get other funding? We've done all that. Tracy Roy, the finance director, and I met with them all, had the conversation. Most of the conversations were with Public Works because they obviously have the biggest LCIP. I told the police department, don't even submit anything. You're getting a new building, don't even bother. If you want something, you're going to go use your drug forfeiture money.
I was going to ask why there's no police.
I told them, don't even, don't even think about it.
Non-starter.
But yeah, so that's what we've done. And, you know, if your recommendation is to go over, if you look at all this, you're like, okay, I really don't want to cut anything, that's your recommendation. But I've tried to present something to you as close as we could to that 80%.
Well, yeah, really the only thing I was thinking about over the course of the weekend was, my only recommendation? my only recommendation would be to reconsider bonding versus operational budgets. Those items where it doesn't really make sense to bond for it, as you even pointed out in your, in your commentary in the, in the pages. Me personally, well, I recognize that that means taxes go up, but-
And that's, I mean, I know we-
That's a council's decision.
We had this comment earlier of that's the way we've always done it, but we have to be realistic in terms of what the tax rate is gonna be. And last year, the tax rate went up significantly. So that's why I felt, well, I think we need to, we're gonna need to do it this way. I'm just trying to recover, and we're coming into a revow, which is gonna have a lot of hot burn for people, myself included. I live here in Lewiston, so this is trying to limit that. That approach may change when we get a new city administrator, but since they put me in charge, I thought it was gonna be for three, six months, but it's been almost a year now. That's why I'm presenting it as I'm presenting to you folks.
That interim really got acting.
Acting sure was a long time, right.
Thanks.
Good acting job.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it has always felt like a very frustrating process for us to be given a significant amount of cuts to do, to make each, this process, which is already, I think, going better this year, but the, ask all the questions, get all of the answers, go through the dialogue. And, and in my own conversations with department heads, I think part of the process that we have always applied, planning boards before us, councils before us, is a little bit of like, we're always gonna present a budget, there's always gonna be a required cut. That's part of the politics of proposing a budget, knowing it has tax implications and communicating it to the citizenry. And there are department heads who are really good at that strategy and add things, so they know exactly where the cut can come from when you ask, because everybody's gotta do a cut. And then there are other departments who, like you, put forward an honest budget each year and then also get stuck cutting. And we're trained into adding things to cut.
And I've tried to do that approach where, and it's part of, I guess, my personality, where I tend to be much more direct. And I even do that when I negotiate with the unions of, "Okay, we want a 10% cooler," and I'm gonna say, "I'm giving you zero." I don't do that. I come in at what I think is a reasonable request, and that's what I've tried to do here. Now, will the City Council agree with us? I don't know, but that's gonna be their determination. So if you folks have some recommendations, by all means, please make them. What you think is important, what you don't think is as important. If you guys wanna do a ranking, I think that's, that's in your purview to do that, and then we'll have the City Council make their decisions on what they wanna do.
Thank you. Mr. Markoff?
A ranking with a very short period of time that we have to work and-
Well, unfortunately, this is, you know, I mean, this is what we have to deal with our timeline.
And that's what I've experienced, not every cycle I've been here in the January, February timeframe, is it's a very short window. First meeting we come to, we're already looking at LCIP, and it's thrown out of lap, and there's a drop-dead time for recommendation. And then the council will take it under advisement for the next couple of months. I have a question, whereas, so if, as we approach the end of the fiscal year, there is a surplus, the City Council may look to push some of this bonding towards, use the surplus with the bonding rather than bonding.
Correct.
So that can put, it's like a relief valve on the, going over the 80%. Because when I see those numbers, just to use ballpark numbers, 6 million is the limit, 14 million is the ask.
Right.
Now, that's over 100% more than-
But I can tell you, though, I was looking at over 30 million ads before I paid it down to get it to you.
Well, wasn't it 34 last year?
Well, that's the Christmas list.
It was 34, I think, last year. Might have been 37.
But at some point, we don't, we don't wanna be in a position of austerity at some point. And it, it's scary, you don't know what the future's gonna hold.
Yeah, that's true.
And until we do something with economic development and bringing in opportunities to increase our revenue and having it, what's the term, like from gardening or? I keep wanting to say generic, but, Jermaine, no, no.
Perennial?
That is a garden.
Comes back every year? Because that feels relatable. No, okay.
I was thinking, like, in farming, when something just happens, growth happens from, no.
Sort of organic growth.
Organ, there's the, I can never come up with that word.
My hope is our economic development will, will improve. We've, you know, we've got some new folks in code and planning, we've got new people in economic development. The City Council last year did give some funding to add additional positions. Some of them were, you know, staggered in, you know, the end of the year, so I know that those positions are getting filled. So my hope is that our new director, and hopefully we have a deputy director, will hit the ground running from the start of the new year and we'll be looking at some economic development.
Because without the organic growth and keep squeezing the people and squeezing the people, it's a bleak future.
I totally agree with you. That's why I didn't give you 37, well, 34 million worth of projects to go through.
Thank you.
Okay, we're all set?
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Malley. For the board, might I open up for discussion a proposal, which is that each of us come prepared with a document that has three bullet points of things that we feel are really important to prioritize, and three, that if we were pushed to absolutely cut something and somebody made us do it, that we were able to speak to maybe the top three to keep and the top three that we would recommend, just as a way of taking each other's temperature at the beginning of that meeting. I might add, based on Mr. Roy's comments and O'Malley's comments, I do, as I look at, even just by department, many of our conversations in here talk often about, what are the planning steps that we take that encourage development? We've talked about business corridors, we've talked about residential, we've talked about downtown, we've talked about infill. This board has historically taken that perspective. I would, we've looked at the Riverfront Island Master Plan, the Choice Neighborhood Plan. We tend to look at what are the choices we're making and how might they enable more economic development and more economic growth without restricting it? And so I, I offer that as a way of thinking through what is a nearly impossible task. It's a proposal, are folks willing to do that as a means of starting our conversation? I can't emphasize enough, if you leave here or have questions that come to you on your commute home or to work in the morning, your chance for getting questions answered is quickly running out. And so if you have any specific follow-up questions, make sure you get them into Shelley. It felt like we were all answered, but if you have a new question, you have a very limited window to ask it so that we can have that reply before we meet next. And at next meeting, we will be working to form recommendations to City Council. Questions? Does that sound like a fair process? Okay, wonderful. I'm gonna move on in the agenda. We would have the reading of the minutes, and I'd be looking for a motion to adopt the December 9th, 2024, and January 13th, 2025 draft minutes.
I'll make that motion, and I made a couple of small changes to the 13th. And I received an email from Linda that said that they were made. And there was like two passes in one of the paragraphs. You know, delete one, and I can't remember what the other one was, but I sent it to everybody. So I'll make a motion that they be accepted with the amendments.
We also have an amendment from the December 9th minutes from Michael Markoff that's been included.
Okay.
Okay, and I got an email to that effect this afternoon. So it got included as I had written it, which I have here.
So then I have a motion, and I'd be looking for a second before we have further discussion. Mr. Dupree? Any other discussion? Did that answer your question?
Yeah, as long as it's-
Reflect your edits from this time.
Reflected exactly as I had presented it.
Yeah, thank you.
In an email.
I mean, do you want me to read it to you? She has the email here, and then she copied it.
That's good, because I haven't seen an actual copy, so yeah.
Here, why don't I just hand it to you and you can read it?
And I was just noticing that, oh, now I know why. It says January 22nd, it's 24. I, I thought maybe it was a misprint and it should have said the 13th.
While he's reviewing, any other discussion or questions about the minutes? No?
It looks good.
Great, hearing none. Can we call the roll?
Yes, Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Michael Markoff?
Yes.
Lucy Bissin, yes. Mike, Mark Roy?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alexander Pine?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to adjourn? So moved?
I think you did motion.
I did?
Yes, and a second.
That was my motion.
Yes, yes.
I wasn't waiting for you to ask.
We have to do a-
All in favor, if it always feels good.
Aye.
I don't know that there's much disagreement. Thank you. See you next time. Yep. If any of you didn't get a chance to watch the workshop that was recorded prior to last week's City Council, it was some pretty exciting updates on the Riverfront Island Master Plan. Should have been following along. And had a network of connection and pedestrian corridors listed as part of it. Your language and everything, sir, you would have been very proud. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.